Playoffs at Warrenville High is still in the playoffs. And they will be playing in Shreveport, therefore we will dismiss the St. Markville schools at one o'clock till the school and supporters of the team to travel and support them in Shreveport. The team itself will be leaving around eleven, and we dismiss school at one. Okay, uh, and a reminder that this is our mediation with the federal court. It starts at ten, but I have a part of lengthy call with Mr. Hammond on Monday, and he's asked that board members get here at nine. So be the process of the mediation, what to expect and...
How personal?
Yeah.
About how long the mediation lasts?
It is, it's scheduled for four hours. Four hours to Bob Larnie, he said it's probably gonna take longer than that. He said be prepared to be here all day.
What, by this on the tenth?
Correct. So this one, this one?
This one.
This one, alright. The luncheon, okay, the special board meeting is on next Thursday.
Okay.
Uh, and that completes my announcements and congratulations. Alright, Southern Scripts? Okay, our Southern Scripts Employee of the Month is Miss Jill Goldman. No, I saw her husband drawing a bow. Okay, well, if she comes in later, I'll present it then, but Miss Jill was recommended. Um, Miss Jill took over Robert's primary. At the time that she took over, there was a grant program called the Art Core. It's American Reading Company program, which was a very difficult transition. She handled it very, very well, and had the faculty behind her. Uh, and she was nominated for Employee of the Month, so when she gets here, we'll present her with the plaque. Alright? Next item would be considered agenda, or are there any items on the agenda that we want to be discussed? Is that it? Yeah?
Addition. Addition.
Okay, we're gonna vote, yeah?
No, no, that is...
We skipped that.
Yes, we skipped it. No, yeah.
Oh, well, that's what I thought, I thought came, I'm sorry. Addition or deletion, an addition or deletion, is that agenda? No, okay, now we can get the agenda. Or are there any items to be pulled for discussion? Alright? Do you have a motion to accept? Motion by Mr. David Sess, saying want us to do, uh, honor, let's go ahead and vote?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes. Alright, next item, uh, would be Finance Committee Recommendations. Move. Unfathomable is the right to accept, second, the right to second, but is David, does he want that?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes. New business, consider approve selecting one school member to the, for the Disciplin Policy Review Committee, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, uh, as part of our rule, uh, every school district is mandated to have a Disciplin Policy Review Committee, this is comprised of one bus driver, two counselors, uh, elementary and high school principal, and several teachers, but one staff teacher specifically, and then teachers from different areas. Uh, and we, all, it's also mandated that we have one board member who is selected, not many part of the teachers to be on this committee, uh, as part of the process, I mean, for you to select one of yourselves to be on the committee.
Sorry. Anybody want to discuss it, anybody want to volunteer?
I volunteer.
The Johnson, the Johnson volunteers? Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Bravo.
Oh, yeah, okay. Mr. Wilson?
If you were already having a fear of other, you may have to do something. That would make some policy.
The whole of the meeting. And it makes some policies.
Alright.
Alright?
Well, you don't want to come here, do you? We don't, I'm sorry. Why can't you?
We're gonna raise your hand.
We, we're gonna, we're gonna...
We're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Here comes the Johnson, he accepted the, uh, the challenge.
Okay, and we're generally, generally gonna meet, we'll probably meet via Zoom, which is easier. Uh, so I'm just saying the notice is out, and then next, the next, the first, I usually meet in the next on the tenth, which is part of the special committee.
Okay. And next would be Consider and Approve Policy Council Member Recommendation by Community Member and Head Start Project Committee, Mr. Johnson?
So, uh, you might be a happy community member?
Yes.
It'll be close.
Alright, start over.
I will, Mr. Na, just for you. So you have recommendations from the community to be on the Policy Council. Policy Council for Head Start has to consist of fifty-one percent parent representatives, which are nominated by parent committees, but the community members are those that are recommended by, um, community members, educators, and so you have in front of you the recommendations, and we're asking for you to approve these recommendations so that they can be part of the Policy Council for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Do you have a minute discussion? Do you have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Don't necessarily agree with every individual people you recommend. However, your decision, so I will vote yes, alright?
Well, it's not Mr. Na.
I, I, I will vote yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well...
I appreciate it, thank you. So that's our recommendation, we did try to, um, reach out to community members from the different areas, um, in, in different, uh, types, to students, um, just community advocates, and those kind of things, so.
Okay, and the board member is, uh, Ms. Poty?
Yes, because Poty is gonna serve as the liaison between the board and, um, the Policy Council.
I tried to put you, I mean. Alright, we need to, we need to approve this? We need to approve this?
Yes, yes, we're asking for approval.
Do you have a motion to accept? Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Clay, is all hoped?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Alright, motion passes.
Ma'am, so next?
Alright, again, start it.
I think voting next, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna remember, okay.
Alright, Consider and Approve One of the Listed Options for the Facility Location for Head Start, Head Start Services in the Sissyia Area.
So, last time we had a board meeting, there was a discussion about, uh, what would be some options for the location in the Sissyia Service Area, and so we listed some options, because we kind of need to know what direction the board wants us to navigate in. Just that we're going in this direction does not mean this is official, this is just steps of what we need to do to kind of find some additional information. And so what we're asking the board tonight is to give us some guidance on what direction we want us to go so that we're not exploring all of these avenues and wasting a lot of time and effort and possible money on getting appraisals and things. We want to, uh, be most effective with our time and our money. So, in front of you the options that we have for you to consider, utilize the current location, which is at seventeen twenty Hotel Rodeo, as it is, um, with no renovations to the facility, and so the use of the property and the facility would be an in-kind match to the grant. The second option would be to utilize the current location and explore options for lifting the facility as well as creating possibly a new driveway, because the current driveway is where the road is flooded, it may be a better option to do the driveway on the Hotel Rodeo. Um, and then the use of the property and the fac- facility would still be an in-kind match to the grant. And Mr. Darisell did follow up with a company, um, on what it would cost to elevate the structure three inches, and the cost for this is three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, um, eight hundred and eighteen. So, that's the cost to elevate that facility. Do you want to make people?
You can hear the noise.
So, three hundred thousand seventy-eight thousand dollars, three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Is this, uh, a building on the slab or?
Uh, Mr. Lee?
Yeah. You're gonna elevate it to the slab? Three feet nine. On the, on the?
And he just received it, that's why it wouldn't, it's not any...
Three feet or three inches?
Three feet.
Three with feet, okay.
Oh, it's at three feet nine.
Okay.
Alright. On, on, on that facility, just, most of you may know about it, but maybe not everybody. Most of the buildings on that facility are up on the piers, but there's one building that's on a slab, and that's the building we're referring to, I think it's six classrooms and a deal there. Because they're elevated, it costs three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, Mr. Darisell. And these funds will come from?
School. Grant, grant, the grant can't would not approve, though Head Start wouldn't approve that type of money for that type of renovation. And there's not that much money in the start of, for it to do. So that's, that's an option. The next option is to consider building a new facility that would be funded, that was school board funded on school board property, and then that facility would actually be leased to the grant. So in a sense, the grant would be paying the note, and that is something that is allowable. So that's an option. Um, another option is to purchase a facility or a property using the Head Start grant funds. This is not school board owned, it's actually federal interest property, but that is a doable, uh, option through the grant. And then another option is to build a new facility using Head Start funds on school board property. The facility would, would not be owned by the school board, and the use of the property would be considered an in-kind match. So if ever we lose the Head Start grant, the board would have to make a decision. Um, actually, the board, the board would make a decision to allow the new Head Start grant to be utilized that facility because it's a federal interest on their property. Um, and then the last option is build a new facility using Head Start funds for the facility and the purchased property, and then both the facility and the property is not owned by the school system, it's all federal interest. Yes, Mr. Na?
Alright. First of all, I ran elevation survey on the school, alright? Elevated. I ran seven points. The low point is nineteen point four feet, and the high point is twenty point one feet. So, it is not that, that tall. Over the last, once or twice, I think, twice, but not very much. So, don't think it needs to be elevated that much. And there are some buildings that are on pier. I've seen, I've seen some two-story buildings in Holly Beach elevated using pier. So, I don't know how much it would cost and how much research you've done, but no school has flooded more than Sissyia High School. I think one time they even had, uh, they'd mark a road for a truck on the blade wall of the field, alright? Same thing in Stevensville. Now, I think that you're doing the right thing by moving the entrance from pier on street to throw down, I think it solved a lot of problems, alright? There are all kinds of ways to minimize the expenses, can't do it tonight. Now, you know that I'm working against the in-kind, uh, no, million dollar area, it's not you. But by doing, using option one, we are utilizing in-kind for buildings already there, building of, giving all the building on, which is enough. So, I would favor some kind of, uh, variation of one and two combined, alright? You keep the facilities, there is, over period, like, like, almost immediately, you have more in-kind, more in-kind, uh, or, okay? But later on, after you determine the expense, the real expenses for elevating, or how, or in order in the back, and, uh, maybe additional structure there. I think if you combine option one and two and give the superintendent a new time to do proper planning and, uh, utilizing optimum, uh, in-kind for that facility, I think it's the only very good. I had no problems discussing all the other options, later on, when Mark asked, if, if it is not, if not, if one or two not approved, then I, I, well, extend any discussion on the other part. But I think it is the only viable option, and it's kind of, uh, correct, uh, stated correctly, but it is some variation of one and two, giving you time, uh, optimum use of in-kind initially, and as you progress, a little bit less, a little bit less. But I think that by moving the entrance on Putorera facing the gorgeous school, Putorera school, and giving us an option to build, elevate, build in the back, uh, and I'm gonna picture it, sure, if you want to, okay? But that one motion would be option one and two combined, using, allowing the superintendent, Mr., to, uh, facing...
Is that clear enough, or? Yeah, uh, do you need someone to explain it a bit better? No, I think that's pretty good, I, I think if you recommend option two.
And, 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 uh, option two, right?
It, it gives us, it doesn't specify what you have to do, it gives us the option to do things if we want, right?
So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't lift it, because...
That's a bit hard, but I know that's four hundred thousand dollars, you say?
If you could do that.
We don't have to do it now, right? You can roll the dice and see how it's been out, because, you know, that was two, uh, sixteen flood, one hundred year flood. So, what our chances would be, we don't know, right? We can roll the dice on it, like you said, that's a thirty percent, yeah, but we... But the other, the other thing we can do is get somebody like Adam Machul to do a drainage study on the site, and they may be able to haul dirt, do some things strategically that will prevent, prevent, or improve the ability. Which is why I think they lack board meeting, if you needed some funds, we got a still injury. Yeah, I think we can, up to one five thousand without group, I guess, uh... Yeah, I just talked about that. Again, my motion is option number two. Alright, the motion on the floor?
I'll say it.
Say, how this David, there?
I just wanna make one comment, I know one of the, uh, clients, one of the places you were looking at was on Port Royal, I passed there a couple of times. Uh, and then, you know, for that situation, it does split and it hurt, I mean, naturally, everything split in two thousand sixteen, except for mine, but, uh, that flows in that area right there, right, and hurt, but also, I found that building was very small.
It is small, it is smaller, it just, uh, went, and that was the initial, but the option in the sense of purchasing a new facility with funds, um, that wasn't a hundred percent only that facility, it kind of gave the option to, if there's any other facilities in that, if you're correct, it is smaller, and so we would have to kind of explore either options of adding portable buildings in the backside to go service the number of children that we would need in Sissyia area.
And I think if we do the wrong, if we don't wanna give you guys, you know, staff, and we'll kind of to, to give us a better idea, because if we wanna rush into, we've got a lot of money, whereas right here, it's ready to move in and go with, with the et cetera, and the rest. So I mean, that's, that's, I say it.
Alright.
And if it passes, then my hire will be eliminated.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion, any more discussion? Alright, the rule?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes.
Ms. Poty, I just wanted to mention, Miss Blanchett mentioned about the special board meeting, you guys want to attend? And so because of the turnover with us still going stocking interviews, we're gonna send out the stocking recommendations on December eighth to everybody, which I know might not be the normal timeframe, but that's the absolute best that we can do, because December seventh is the Policy Council, and so we're gonna go with them, they'll approve it, and then the next day we'll be able to send those names and this to all stopping this for Head Start for the meeting that I want you to.
You can just email mine, if...
I'll get it when they can, kind of do it both ways, you know, we'll find out from her, who wants to email and who wants to take her mail.
We have established that that's not a worst decision, you want to do it five, we're gonna give a time.
Yeah.
Everybody know about? It's on Thursday.
Oh, it's Thursday?
Yeah, we can do it either at four or at five, or...
Five. Five, on the other.
Five, five. The tenth Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Seven, ten, five.
And, and, and again, I don't know, because that we started here early, but it does create problems for some people who weren't attending the meeting, and today, everything goes well, we'd be very proud of that, and, and if someone wants to come visit, they can come at five, and it's all very cool. I like that.
Alright, next item, board member request? I'm being, Consider and Approve Supplement to Call the Board, Johnson will be there.
Yes. Uh, I visited all the schools in San Warrenville, and I wanted to see really how the safety rules that they use. I visited the primary on that, and to me, as a school board member, the, uh, employee, I suggested that we give all the employees a supplement. Why? Because we need to show them how much we appreciate them coming to work. And it was dangerous, and, uh, I feel they are doing a splendid job. When you walk in school, as I was saying for the education meeting, when I walked in school, sanitized in, get in the office, they take your temperature. Then the children were in the hall, they were like distant from each other with their masks. I visited the high school, the junior high, the little elementary, they had a little circle where he stood, and the teacher, uh, like a log, he used the bathroom, they write the child's name down, the time the child came back in. Bus drivers, they do the same thing, cafeteria worker, everybody in San Warren Parish, uh, schools. The workers are doing very well. September school open, October we didn't hear that much. November, of course, is gonna be, uh, flu season, but I think they did very well those three months. And I reprimand them from the superintendent up to whatever, the school board, the cafeteria worker, everybody that worked at San Warren Parish. And the children are very safe in school. I see that because when they come back on the weekend, they come back not wearing their mask, and they come with the Corona, where they have to close schools. No, it's not happening in the school, it's happening in the community. And I applaud the San Warren Parish workers. I think we need to show them how much we appreciate them for working in the parish to keeping our children safe, and I think they deserve a supplement. And I'm talking to the board members, it's, it's on you.
Oh, Mrs. Zach wanted to say something, or?
Yeah, thank you, uh, let me just echo, um, what Mr. Evans said. Uh, you guys know when it's first hit and read in the newspaper and on the news TV, employees were terrified. A lot of them thought that this was a hoax, it wasn't real. Well, I'm a witness to let you guys know that it is real, but the employees have answered the call for you guys, unfortunately. They have showed up, and like Mr. Thompson said, what they're doing at the school, they following the protocol, that Mr. Blanchett sent a list of things that he wanted everybody at each school site to follow, and it happened, all of those things. In the past, and I don't like to talk about the past, but bullet members, we got veterans, Mark A. Berry, Floyd Knox, Richard Poty, we got other educators on this board who knew during the time that you guys would approve supplements, like coming back to school, we didn't get it. Nobody squawked. You know, you didn't hear a thing. We did it going for November, okay? Which we all appreciate. So I think what we've gotten down to is saying that the employees have really stepped up and followed the rules and the regulations to make this parish look good. They got other parishes that, with, uh, kids, damage infected, schools are closing down. We have a small mom and cases, and you guys, you know, I just want y'all to think about it. And, uh, let's show the employees how much we appreciate it. Give us something.
Can you give everybody the same, um?
Mr. President?
Five hundred dollars.
Uh, Mr. Blanchett? Miss Evans called me yesterday to discuss that, I am, and, uh, at the time, I mean, today's only December second, you know, so our sales tax numbers for the month of November fourth are coming, and we actually assigned, uh, the document late yesterday, and we've got a chance to go through it and decipher it, basically, break it down and see where we're going. Yesterday, when Miss Evans called me, I, I recommended, I said, told us, and the only way we'd be able to give a supplement is if you took it out of the supplements. But that's changed a little bit today, uh, with, with the numbers that we got in. Over the last couple of months, we've seen the numbers tick up slightly. They're right now trending about five percent higher than they were last year. And at the beginning of this year, we were using last year's numbers, and if we gave the two supplements that we gave in November and, and June, we were projecting a slight deficit, okay? But with the numbers trending a little bit higher, things are looking better. So the board could give a supplement in this, if you disperse in January. And speaking to Miss Casey today, you could go up to five hundred dollars, and essentially, at this point, you know, the way things are trending and the way it looks, you would have essentially the same deficit that we were projecting back in August. Okay, now, we also have some audits that have come in, but we didn't put those numbers into that calculation, because we don't know, sometimes people fight people, sometimes they pay, sometimes they pay it on time. So we didn't include those numbers in, in that five percent in, in that projection. And so it could possibly be a little bit better. If they continue the trend that they're reading, we would finish the year, uh, not in the red, is that correct, Miss Casey? If they continue the trend of the rate they're going, we would not, we would not have a deficit. And I'm cautiously optimistic, you know, if they can, tense continue the way it is, possibly we consider it something maybe later in the spring.
So, Miss Casey, you would feel comfortable that we could, uh, do five hundred dollars supplements in January?
Yes, after reviewing the numbers from Matt today, I'm comfortable with that, because it would put us in no worse of a position than we budgeted for. So we collected enough from July to now to cover that, and and that was always the intent, was to come back in January and review where we were. Uh, so, or just doing it in my earlier, but yes, I'll be comfortable with that.
This one, uh, you did the, the supplement with the general fund or sales tax?
There's gonna be sales tax.
Sales tax. Alright, now, I don't know how many of you can remember my June meeting, but I did say there was concern about sales tax. However, the figures looked as though they were very stable. Uh, nothing has changed since June, y'all should have accepted my motion in June, therefore, alright? That's all.
Well, we, Mr. Park?
I was gonna say, I had to bring up Mr. Nazi, because I was, when I voted, uh, put a motion up against it, and he's probably right, but the one thing I'd like for us to do is, you know, I'm not, not knocking this amount, or I'm not knocking this to do, back in the day when I first got on the board, y'all had a little knockdown, and when it came to supplements, everything was supposed, we voted on it as a board, and it goes to the Finance Committee, if I remember right. And then it comes to the, to the board, uh, and you probably check that on, and, and now, whether it was to down the policy or not. Uh, and you probably checked that on, and now, whether it was to down the policy or not, I don't know, that's what we, what we had suggested back then. I wish Mr. Fugel was here, uh, because I know he was still here, Mr. Potey, I don't know if you remember or not, but we basically suggested that we go to the finance committee. And this, it could still be done in the January meeting because that's what it looks like it's trending to. Uh, and then have Casey come to the finance committee and then.
I would suggest, I would suggest that, uh, me and we were discussing it at this meeting, that at the next meeting, well, let's say next meeting.
Yeah.
The January meeting, that if the funds are, if it looks like the funds will be available, then we okay then?
Right. What would it cost you?
The what?
The cost?
He wants to know the cost.
With benefits and everything, it's around six hundred thousand dollars. Six hundred thousand.
We can, Ms. Casey and I have met on this yesterday and again today. Uh, and actually, when we met yesterday, we were going to come to the board and suggest exactly what you're saying, but then it was a numbers game and today we were able to recommend a little bit stronger than that. Basically, you can approve it tonight, or if you approve it in January, in January, first of thing, whatever you do. We can still disperse it in January, there's time for us.
So we could, could approve it tonight, and then it must be available.
You can do that, or you can wait and approve it in January, either way.
Mr. Potey? Yeah, I'm gonna say, well, who is, Mr. Knox, uh, June, he's supposed to, three percent increase. And you know, for the kids might look like, that's a lot, that's a little total appreciation when you give them something. You know, if you want to give the employees something, you give them three percent across the board. Uh, I figure that's going to cost the board eight hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. And we have a surplus of thirty-six million dollars. And, you know, I came on board across from twenty-six years ago. And the board was going to deficit two million dollars, but the board not to give three percent across the board. You know, that's a sin of shame, it would take approximately forty years in order to go into deficit. Me, you, we all be deceased unless you family staying here for a hundred and twenty years. You know, we, we gotta look at what's best for the employees now. The best thing for the employees now is three percent for our board in June. I'm, I'm not about ready to give a supplement. I, I, I want to give a supplement firm that's going to stick to it. You know, that, that supplement deal, you know, in part to get the security ties, that, uh, you know, they want something that's going to stick with them for every time, I'm going to, and that's my statement.
The, the reason why I said that, that was a, a pandemic. And to show them how much we appreciate them coming to work. Now, the three percent, you could still give it to them. It's like ninety dollars a check. So, uh, Mr. Knox said I, I vote against it. I'll vote it with supplement. I don't mind giving the teachers a raise because I was a teacher and it's hard. They probably give them a check this month, six more weeks, they don't have any money. So by them giving us a little, a little stipend, if they would give me two hundred dollars when I was a teacher, I was proud of that, that showed me that the board cared for us. And that's how I feel, the cost of living is, is very expensive. And I talked to Mr. Ed, and he was telling me a certain body, said, Mr. Johnson, I need to check into it. Because as a teacher, it's hard. After you get your check in December, you don't get a check until six weeks, it's hard. By them giving, even if they get two hundred, they too many were satisfied. I'm talking for the teachers. I'm talking for them because they came out and we need to show the teachers how much we appreciate. The three percent y'all still had given to.
So it doesn't matter?
Well, give it three thousand, make a vote for what?
For the five hundred dollars.
For five hundred dollars supplement.
I like to move that motion because Johnson is saying that, uh, you also should give the group three percent.
I said if you want to give them the five, you can give them the five. And if you want to give them the three, it's still okay.
So what, what you saying?
So what are you saying?
Both of them?
Give them both. I said, all right, we agree.
What you saying?
I said, yeah, we both.
What?
I just, I want you to tell the people that they're looking at.
All right, we have a motion on the floor about Ms. Beta.
Was that, I, I need to know, are we talking about an amount of sales tax one or sales tax two? Because if it is sales tax two, then most people are certified. Prepar, pre, pre, pre. See, they don't know. There's a difference.
Yes. So Ms. Casey and I talked, it's a five hundred dollar supplement for all employees.
Right.
Across the board.
So then you would have to come mostly from sales tax one.
Right.
Up sales tax two. We should have new sales tax compared to four.
Ms. Casey?
That's why y'all should wait till the board on the next one so she can give us all that information. I mean, and it's going to pass, but we need to have her, we can't put her on the spot.
Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of the, of the supplement.
I just eat cheese.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the supplement.
I'm in favor of the supplement, but to try to pass a three percent raise tonight for all employees, what's going to happen is what happened in the eighties. You're going to give a raise and then you have to come back a year from now and have to institute a cut.
It will be forty years if you're able to.
Yeah, that'll be happening.
Thirty-four years, that'd be.
All right, remember that thirty-six million dollar surplus is, it, it sounds like a lot, but you, you have to have a certain amount in order to self-insure and provide our employees with inexpensive and high-quality insurance. You have to have money in, in your hands to do that. You know, we keep a, a three or four-month reserve in salaries. If ever we get a catastrophic event like Katrina was in New Orleans, we can continue to pay our employees for three months without any sales tax, without any MFP money coming in. And we, we, I was here, my first year as a teacher, Mr. Chavallini was here, they found out they didn't have money to pay the bill in August.
Yes.
And, yeah. Now, the court was here, there were several of us that were here, it was kind of scary.
They took our money, they took our money. They had, they had two men supervised, they had, uh, a Jeep.
They owned a Jeep.
I was there, they had two men Jeep, and I love it, and we cut some of the Jeep down. I was there for it.
All right.
When you're talking about.
Hold up, hold up. You have to realize that the question that we approved will end in the next, okay? I just want to let y'all know that.
All right, we have, we have a motion on the floor for a five hundred dollar supplement by Ms. Beta. Mr. Potey, you were coming with a.
Uh, amendment.
You're amending?
You need to get a, you need to get a second for the motion.
I second.
Then, then you get a.
Uh, Ms. Johnson seconds Ms. Beta's motion. And Mr. Potey, you want to make a su- a supplement motion?
I'll make an amendment.
Amendment to the motion. All right, do you have a second on that?
I'll second.
You'll second it, all right?
What, what, is taking, taking the amendment, sir?
What was your amendment? My amendment is to include a three percent across the board. And if my figure is right, and Ms. Casey is right here, it would take forty years for us to go to deficit if we would demand that the same MFP funded, let's say that. And each and every year, we come up with a surplus of one billion dollars. No board member can figure it out, but I can tell you how we come a hundred and sixty, because you know what? It's going to drop the employee for real if I say it tonight. I, I, the surplus come about. But I know for a fact, I figured it out, and I know it, two things I know.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and amendment to the supplement.
And Mr. Potey, that's a three percent raise to the salary.
But, uh, uh, in June? So Mr. Potey, you.
That would be starting next fiscal year, Richard.
So, there's. Mr. Potey, clarification. So if Richard's failed, then we'll go back to the room.
Correct. All right.
Would you like to vote us? You want this one, right?
If you want to vote it, we'll send the motion.
I think so, I used to clarify if we're not certain.
Yeah, I'm not that scared.
Mr. Potey, if I, I understand this correctly, you are recommending a three percent raise to the salaries across the board in addition to the five hundred dollar supplement.
Exactly. But again, this is a big year.
It would begin next fiscal year.
No idea, right? Eight hundred fifty thousand or eight, you got it. Eight hundred fifty thousand? Yeah, no way. I don't know what they do.
Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion?
Can we get an about how much it costs us?
He says things to say, that in June, not only that I made a motion for a three percent, that we never said make, two percent, but I gave several suggestions as how we could live. Same thing with the sales tax, not only I made a motion to give, so, but how it would be funded, all right? But we're using all, so, yet I would move to the board.
All right, all our bonds affected by these surpluses?
Yeah.
We got. You get good rates because of that?
What we talked about tonight is because we have a surplus.
So you're going to start.
Is it, is it? Ms. Casey?
So our group's annual income fund and all funds is about forty-five million, I think that's a very rough number, times three percent is one million three hundred and fifty thousand. Then you have to add on about twenty-nine percent for benefits, which is another three hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars.
So in total, we're looking at how much?
Yeah, about one point seven.
One point seven, it's, it's locally difficult. As long as we got sufficient employees that need it, more money, then I'm looking at much, right? So, no, we need to probably look at some of these tables, right? Seventy-five percent, eighty, eighty percent of our.
Eighty-five percent of our.
Our, our recommendation would be to, uh, table that three percent to the next meeting so we can look at it more and see exactly what we'll be spending here if we do go with that and go with the five hundred supplement. But regardless of that, we have the vote on it.
But I agree what you're saying, but I think I heard somebody say they postponed the whole thing to January. And so why don't we table the whole thing in January, I can bring my most, my best, my, uh, material that I presented in May and in June, but we have two motions on the floor, so we need to vote.
You can, you can have one more amendment.
One more amendment. Okay, well, Mr. Knox taking an amendment to wait till next week.
My amendment is postponed both hours in January.
All right, we got a second, second amendment stay here. And, and just. All right, let's hold on to the third, Mr. Knox.
Yes.
Yes.
Pretty fast.
All right, passes. Mr. Fugel voting, Mr. Fugel voting yes.
Yes.
So we have, we have six. All right, the motion passes to postpone until next week.
Just, all you need is five hundred, Mr. Salazar.
Who's there?
Mr. Salazar here, so all you need is five, five most.
How many is that? I did that before, so, I, I was thinking he was here.
Well, yeah.
I was there because I, I heard the only one who was, uh.
I need this to do it. Steve, what are you saying? They don't give me five hundred.
No, no, we postpone it to five hundred and the three percent.
So they get it in January.
We postpone it for the next meeting so basically we come up with the, uh, current, with, with the funds, or say, whatever the funds will lead us.
But what do you, what are we going to have, the emergency meeting, we going to talk about it?
No, we, I mean, if we.
Because they need to have money in January.
If, if we, we could, it could be discussed at the emergency meeting and more. It could be discussed, the January meeting is the first week of January.
So we still get it.
If we hold on to the floor, we can still disperse it.
Okay.
They can get it, we typically give that supplement in the middle of January, around the fifteen. And as Casey and I spoke, if the board approves it at the January meeting, we can still pay it in January.
Okay.
And, and special to the issue, the only item that cannot wait, so we have to wait on that. And, and we, we have time to disperse it, so.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Next item will be, well, Mr. Knox, you still want to discuss?
No, that's, it's over.
Okay. Uh, item C, you consider an approval, amending the grading scale to ten-point system, uh, that would be Mr. Stelling.
Mr. Stelling, I spoke, we, we'll address it at the, uh, January.
Item D, consider an approval, having a board member recuse themselves if they receive campaign contribution from any company or individuals that have been business with the school board, Mr. Bayberry?
Yes, and basically what I'm asking for is a second on this motion right here. And I really believe it brings up the integrity of our board and shows the public that, you know, we're not going to have any wrong, we, we believe in no wrong moves if, if, if people think that way. And any other, if, some people in the public had actually pushed it a little bit stronger, but I think this is, this is, uh, sufficient enough, I think. And it shows that, and, and even the lady at that, the board said, it's not in there, but it's not a bad policy to have, you know, and she said, and she just, you physically count, if that hurt her people. She said, it's probably in the best interest that you refuse yourself. So that's why I decided to bring it up on, on as a policy. So that's on motion. You know what I'm saying?
Ms. Beta?
Um, the talking to Mr. Boyes, he was saying that he talked to several people and he said, we probably should make the policy. Um, I think I'm the only one that took money from several people. And, uh, I don't think I'm doing anything wrong.
No, it's not you doing anything wrong.
That's saying, you're saying that somebody gave you in the public?
No, I, I, I requested for them, just in my case. And what they said is, and this is what I was told, this, in one of my constituents, he said, well, if you're going to do that, what you also ought to do is probably with that the company that's making the contribution can't have any contracts with, with the school. I said, well, I already put this one down, so I'm leaving it at that.
But we take other things from people that work with, the guys, and all that stuff.
Uh, campaign contribution, that's all we're talking about.
That's still the same thing, I mean, you still taking money from them. But I'm the only one that would give both of them.
Ms. Casey, you have two more.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, we're all bound by ethical guidelines. And if a vendor chooses, there's certain limits and restrictions to accepting stuff from vendors. And we always make sure that we are by ethical guidelines, etc. We are guilty.
I, I, I want to say so. Mr. Potey, I spoke to the attorney, and he said, you can make that, but he said, it's like, it's a joke. He said, because first of all, uh, electoral official is governed by, uh, the, uh, US, I mean, the state representative and legislative representative make these bills. And if, if the bill they make over supersede the little law that the school board would make, he said, y'all can make, put it in policy. But he said it will not stick until the legislature makes the policy and make, or you are going to support it. So, honestly, you know, I'm going for it, but I know he'd be gay, she can vote, but you have to go to the state legislature and, and you said, in order to have that deal, uh, fast and, and keep up. It's not a bill, it's a. I know, I know, but it, it, she's still the vote. Because if you're ready to vote, if, if you're ready to vote, she would, we would lose. But this is the party right here, if he, if he spoke to the same people I spoke to, they're going to do the same thing.
There, there's no law that prohibits this type of policy. Uh, not that I could find, not, not that anyone that I, that I've talked to could find. Uh, it, it would be a policy that self-limits, you, you would be limiting your ability to accept contributions. Um, I've talked to the attorney general's office and no one there had come across this. Um, so there's nothing that, there's no law that, that I could find that would preclude this board from self-limiting itself. It's just the same as you limit yourself on, on, on your agenda items, saying you, you have to have it one meeting before you can act on it, that, there's no law that says you have to do that, that's something that you.
They said, listen, I'm saying, I'm sure they have a lot to leave here, there is a law.
I'd love to see it, it's a, like, it's like a rainbow unicorn somewhere. So if, 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 if you guys decide that you want to self-limit yourself, you can self-limit yourself. Um, my, I do have a question or concern about whether or not it would be a public policy issue. Um, that's not, you're not going to find it in a law book, you're not going to find that in, in any jurisprudence. It's just a matter of public policy. Do we want to have any elected official, um, limit their campaign contributions relative to their voting? But I can't find any law that will preclude you guys from doing it, so if you want to do it, I think you can do it. Uh, the other option would be you go get an A G opinion, official opinion from the attorney general's office and say, yes, San Juan Parish Board, you can do this, and it's very specific to you guys. I think that's your options, but as I researched, I found no law that says that you can't do that.
My only question would be, uh, you know, by doing so, we're kind of restricting ourselves and we have everybody looking at, and if you don't do it here, somebody's going to complain. If you do it there, somebody's going to complain. Why, why do this if we don't need to? That's my opinion. Uh, if, if it was something I thought we needed, I'd say, yeah, this would, uh, we have the board of ethics. We have, uh, one. We have, uh, people watching it, so I think we have enough. If we start putting these restrictions on ourselves, uh, we're liable to get ourselves into some deep stuff. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and then that's why I put it on the table.
And, and, you know, I, I just, I just personally don't think we need to start restricting ourselves and putting ourselves in a bind where this is gonna be looking at, or you didn't do it right that way, or you didn't do this. If, if somebody's doing something wrong, the board has to be stacked, and that's clear. I, 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 I feel we got enough restrictions already with the COVID and everything, and I just don't see putting more restrictions on ourselves. Especially at this time. But that's just my opinion.
Look, I have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on this table.
Let me get off. You see, I see, I see nothing.
Mr. Pochet, you second the motion?
They should keep making policy. I see, then a policy of search will not stand, and a poor law will still be there. That's it, what I see. So you know, can't run a law, and then make sure that.
If we have a policy, we got a policy.
We should make a policy. I vote for, you can make a policy, come here, man. I vote for.
Did you say? All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do you have a second? Mr. Knox? You second it?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? The motion is to set a policy that, uh, board members refuse themselves if, uh, that, that refuse themselves if they receive a campaign contribution from any company or individual that do business for the school.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I don't answer the school board. And I'm sure all of you been on the school board, you may get contribution, you probably get sure. And I was offered a thousand dollars. I didn't know what was going on. So, you know, like you, I'm there, no sir, I don't care for it, thank you very much. But if I would have taken it, and I would have done like one of them, I would have to write one with a big paper that so-and-so donated, because so-and-so could have claimed it on the income tax. And I'm sure some of you been school board members, the ethic group did, did, uh, do any laws at the time, but I'm sure everybody was collecting money. Because I was asked, when it's time for money?
I never got.
Well, that's true, but I was offered. They wanted to offer so I, so I can win signs for my campaign.
Well, I never got that, that was a school board position.
Oh, yeah, they offered me. I have friends, I have friends that offer, I said, no, I don't want it. And, uh, everybody took. So why, why do I have to be, uh, I don't know if you market, why you say, if you take money from a company, uh, that I couldn't shut out a meeting where the school board, the person should do, that's not right. I've never had one like this.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
I gotta, I gotta say something else. I've been getting money, and this is the first time that Mr. Jim Pochet gave me money. And I think this is really targeted towards him.
Oh, that's what it is?
You know, that's what I really think that's well about.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. All right, this, uh, wait, vote.
You know.
There's a huge like, there's a lot of people.
I don't really like it, you know?
I'm voting yes, the challenge is hard.
Okay, I, I, I have to put my, uh, student, send me that, uh, uh, that. See, I don't.
We have both, three and one, we're pulling them off.
I see.
Hold it, no, hold it. Stelling voted no?
Stelling said yes.
Stelling voted no?
No. Yeah, that's not.
I stand there alone now.
We have four yeses.
So it's three, three and four.
Four.
Four, four.
You got it.
Four, four, and I both no.
Very well.
So that's pretty good. Four, four, so it'd be four, four.
Eight tails from the.
Yes, all right. So the tables. All right, next item. Uh, let's see, consider an approval, beginning a research and study on professionals, including a cost analysis for adding more positions or outside resource.
Actually, it was supposed to be just a discussion, I, I, I voted it wrong.
All right.
I, and you and I, uh, Mr. Pochet and I have had conversations about this, maybe a couple other departments, that, that our buildings have increased, our, our, you know, square footage has increased, and I think we're behind on that. And in order to put it into the next year's budget, I think we probably need to have, to reevaluate our, our, uh, our facilities and see exactly where our needs are, and maybe refocus, because again, other places increase, and if we need to start protecting cost somewhere to add more, more, uh, repair professions for, for a piece of our building, then we need to probably sort of, yeah. Because we, we invested all this money in these bonds, and if we're gonna just let our buildings deplete, then it makes sense. That's what I'm looking for. I think it's just a discussion, then that'd be a policy.
I've had several board members bring that up over the years, and, uh, when Olin was here, Olin and I discussed that a long, Mr. Darasal, he was. Olin used a, a formula that was based on square footage, and actually, uh, the formula he used, we were a little understaffed before we even added any buildings, according to his formula. I'm not sure where he got the. And, uh, I agree, we've added square footage everywhere, but the issue comes in, you're not talking about adding one or two custodians, because we've added square footage everywhere. You're talking about adding one at, I mean, not every screen, but probably most of you. You're looking at ten to twelve more employees that have cost a thirty-five to forty thousand a year. Uh, so you know, you, you're approaching a half a million dollars right there. And that's really where the concern is at. It is, is funding.
And, and the other thing that I want you to look at, if you saw it on there, uh, consider outside resources.
Yeah, and I.
And, and instead of paying all their benefits, you're, you're not, you're not hurting anybody right now, this is. But in order to maybe keep up, I'd say, I don't know, brass hands, maybe hire an outside lawn service to, to help out better. Maybe an outside janitorial services to help out, and instead of, when you pay them, and you don't have to worry about the insurance, or, or about retirement better. But you still have your, your, your staff in place, where you're not hurting them.
That might be a little more of a viable option. Uh, they possibly like outsourcing lawn service so that you don't have, and then you free up a custodian from that. It's like giving you an extra person without having to, to, because once you, once you commit to that position, once you create that position, if you come back later and you start cutting positions, and you replace it with something, with a, with a lawn service or a janitorial service, then you're obligated for that ultimate accrued liability. But if you, if you never create a position and you just outsource, then you're not obligated to that. You can decide not to outsource, and, and the next year, the year after, you can change vendors or whatever, depending on the service. So what we can do is we do a bit of research on, like, start out with, maybe what would it cost to get a lawn service to do the lawns at school? Which would free up the janitor to be just in the building doing clean.
And the great thing about that is if that service, if that company doesn't do the service that we need, we know how it's a process. If somebody doesn't run their job, you know how it's a process.
You need, you need your annual contract with, uh, an option to get out of it if they're not the one to serve the services.
So, would you recommend, uh, we look into it?
Yeah.
See, come back at another meeting and discuss it again?
Correct.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Pochet, uh, the next other scripts, executive session?
Correct.
But, uh, our employee of the month is here.
All right.
You, you have an executive session?
Yes.
Sure, all right. Okay, uh, I did give a brief little, uh, talk about our employee of the month, but, uh, she's here now, so I'll do it again. Our employee of the month this month is Miss Jill Bozeman. Miss Jill is the principal at, uh, Berwick Primary. She started out as a teacher in the parish, and was an assistant principal in St. Mordenville, correct?
That's Cecilia, when you were saying our primary and other.
Okay, and then, uh, is now the principal at Berwick Primary. Uh, when she took over the school, we were implementing a new program, the American Reading Company Law Court Program, which was a difficult changeover, and she had some, a little bit of pressure back from her faculty, but over the course of a year, working with everybody, going through all the training and implementing it, by mid-year, she had everybody on board. It was a difficult time, and she stuck with it and got the job done. Um, we have a, a batch of very good principals, but if you go to Berwick Primary, that school is very well-run. They deal with the issues that come up. She's, her faculty supports her and is behind her. And, uh, she's done a very good job of keeping the school going during COVID. So, there's Jill, you're very deserving of this award. You can come out, and that would be, uh, Christine's good. And if, Donna, do you want to come up?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, so like, there, motion is when they take the session. What about the, the, the? Let's go to.